Well, good morning everyone and welcome back to the outpost. It rained pretty much all day yesterday and I brought several boards in here. I got them stained and I got the next section all cut up. I was on my way up here today. Jennifer's actually on her way up here to help me. And it was raining. We were gonna go outside and frame that next section and put the siding on, but I decided that probably what we will do in order to make good use of the day, because I didn't want to get the cameras out in the weather, to just go ahead and measure, get all the two horizontal tuba fours cut for that third section. Got a lot of boards carried in here that I need to plane them and stain them. So we'll get those cut and ready to go. So, and we're just gonna try to make best use of the day. Anyway, hope you all sit back, stay tuned and enjoy the video. Smokey, what are you doing? Huh? What are you doing?
Hi y'all! Oh, Smokey, he likes to give me kisses. Yes, he does. Y'all get to see my hair all messed? I'm back! I know you've missed me. Anyway, we'll see you here in a second. I'm gonna put my toboggan back on because I look like a wild and crazy person. Alright y'all. I wanted to tell you guys that, I know this is a little late, but we hardly get to our P.O. box just because dad comes out here super early before they're open. But he did go this past week and one of our subscribers by the name of Terry was so kind to send us a Christmas card. So thank you Terry. And she did send me some jokes. And I have to tell you, there's a couple of them that are cute. So what do you call a baby rifle? Do you know dad?
Huh?
What do you call a baby rifle?
Rifle?
Uh huh.
I don't know.
A son of a gun. I thought that was super cute. And another one says, "What kind of tree can you carry in the palm of your hand?" I guess I just gave that away. It's "What kind of tree can you carry in your hand?" And it's a palm tree. So I thought that was cute too. But anyway, I'm gonna get to putting some linseed oil on this piece of wood that is gonna be the outside of dad's house. So I'll share more jokes here shortly.
I'm making some tomato soup. Jennifer doesn't want any. I hate chicken noodle too. So heat this up and eat me a bite and we'll get back at it.
What's the difference between a camera and a pair of socks? A camera takes photos and a pair of socks takes five toes. He's trying not to hee-haw over there.
I tell you what guys, this Australian tongue and linseed oil, it's really good stuff. Because normally stain, you would have to put on a whole lot of it. But it actually goes on very thin, but it seems to be thick. It does really, really a good job. Well guys, we're gonna go ahead and head in because it's a little bit getting late up in the evening. But you can see, I got all these pieces for this wall also cut out. These pieces were already cut out. I did that yesterday. And then Jennifer, she finished burning and staining all of these boards over here so that they would be ready to go. So anyway, I appreciate her coming up here and doing that because actually I've got enough burned and stained and pre-cut to go all the way across the front wall. I will have to close those gable ends in with plywood up underneath before I can work on cutting that corner and actually coming down the other side. And I was telling her that I'd probably have to enlist some help because that's gonna have to be done off of the step ladder, not the tripod thing, but the longer ladder actually. And that would be kinda hard to do by yourself. So that's coming along. We're gonna go ahead and pick up all the tools and stuff like that. We did sweep because there's a lot of dust when you're cutting on the inside here. But the rain, it just, it didn't favor us the last two days. Because like I said earlier, she was coming up here. We were gonna cut this plastic off right here and put the siding on this one section. But I told her, I said, "I don't want to get the cameras out in the rain." It was kinda sleety snowing earlier and it just stopped a while ago. So, I mean, we did, this was time well spent because I'm gonna have to do it anyway. So now just make, when I get ready to do that, it'll hold up faster.
I will see you again soon.
So I'm gonna get packed up. I'll see you tomorrow. Hey, good morning everyone and welcome back to the outpost. Today I decided I'd do a little something different. I built a fire. A top-down fire actually. So what I did primarily was put my big stuff on the bottom, then my medium-sized stuff, then my smaller stuff with some fire starter in there. And as you can see, as that fire burns down, it will burn into the bigger stuff. The smaller stuff falls down in between these medium-sized pieces right here and actually keeps it going. But yeah, I mean, there's many ways to build a fire. So it's always nice to experiment. Just like I had somebody comment about me using a lighter. Well, I believe that, you know, it's important to use this fire steel here too because in the event that you didn't have a lighter or if your lighter, like I've had many, didn't work at the right time, at the time that I needed them, that, you know, you need to know how to start a fire with something else. And you can always count on this right here. It's just the preparation for the fire. So I find that drier lint and the fine shavings or the dust from fat wood work the best. They'll almost take a spark immediately. But anyway, I'm getting my tools out here. I'm gonna get busy. And we're gonna take this second section off and see if we can put the radiant barrier, the tuba fours, and then the siding on this second section here. So I hope you all sit back, stay tuned and enjoy the video.
Smokey: (mimicking gun) 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 (mimicking gun)
But recently, we lost a subscriber. Cause I tried to reply to him when I was doing some work. And I think that he misread it and he got, he felt like I was being short with him. And so, you know, I guess he left. But, you know, I wanted to make a public apology because that's not my intention, you know, to do that to anybody. You know, we love all the people, that's the reason that we do giveaways every month on both channels. Because we love, you know, the people for their support and following us. But, you know, it's hard to read sometimes a text and take the, get the meaning out of it. So, you know, I, I just wanted to say, you know, if you're still around, that I do apologize. And I did write another response quite lengthy. But, you know, I'm pretty much straight to the point. A lot of times, especially as busy as I am. But I did take the time to write and say, you know, "That's not what I was actually saying at all." He felt like I said that I got short with him. And I, like I'm saying now, you know, "That's not my intention to be short with anybody." I wish that I could, you know, talk on camera. Or, you know, if you all send me a text and I try to, or comment and I try to respond to you, you know, like I say, please don't take that out of context because, you know, the person doesn't have a chance to come back or say anything. I don't even know if he'll see the comment that I replied if he's gone. But it doesn't give you an opportunity to say, "That's, you know, that's not what I meant at all." So, I'm publicly apologizing if he's still around. So, anyway, the puppy's in there sleeping. And I'm gonna go ahead and put these tools up. You know, it's cool that he can sleep with all this noise going on. But, anyway, I'm gonna go ahead and pick up all the tools and then I will see you guys tomorrow. So thanks for stopping by and hanging out with us up here at the outpost while we're now putting the siding on the cabin. And we wanna wish everyone a great afternoon, take care of yourselves. We look forward to seeing you back up here at the outpost again next time.